We're not the board of trustees by any stretch of the imagination. We did want to make a very special presentation to Ms. Grant before she had to leave. And so I'm sorry, audience, but you'll hear this part twice because we want to give Ms. Grant her full recognition. On April 23rd, 2024, CCSD and districts across the nation will celebrate National School Driver, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. In honor of National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, the board will recognize a host of drivers serving our district who are employed by our service provider First Student. The most senior drivers employed by First Student, one of whom is Ms. Grant with 44 years of service. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Lynch to share a little bit more about Ms. Grant.
Good evening, everybody. So just a real quick few quick things that I learned about Ms. Grant and her service. 44 years with the district that I wanted to share with everybody. So Ms. Grant initially started with the district as a first grade teacher's assistant at Hersi. Ms. Grant and her husband William have been married 57 years.
Fifty seven.
Mr. Grant also worked for the district as a crossing guard on Park West Boulevard. I learned that this evening. He's been crossing guard for 13 years. So both of them together serve our students. They got married at a very early age. I believe they were still in high school at the time when you have to were married thereabouts. That's the story I heard. Just graduated. Okay. Ms. Grant became a was a mother at an early age and went on to graduate from Charles A. Brown High School and graduated from the College of Charleston. As being a young mother, Ms. Ms. Grant always had a special fondness for young parents and so therefore she always found it a way to end up driving our Head Start bus, which was known as the bus for a lot of our teenage parents. Otherwise known as the Head Start bus today. They call it the baby bus. But anyway, 44 years, we appreciate you. I thank you very much for all you've done, for all the students that you've cared for and for being a devoted employee for the district. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Ms. Grant?
I just want to say thank you so much and God bless you all and all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene into public meeting. Do I have a second?
Some of it.
So objections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now back into public session. We will move on to item five A, which is the annual renewal of contracts for the 2024-25 staff. Motion before the Board is to approve the issuance of contracts for the 2024-25 year complying with the Teacher Employment and Dismissal Act and based on contractual obligations or budgeted allocations for all certified staff. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Yes, we're in we're in board docs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I would ask everybody to cast their vote.
I am still not connected.
It's it's Ms. Waters and Mr. Cowen, are they? Okay.
So the special called meeting is still.
And the motion passes. Onto item six, which is the audit and finance purchase of contracts greater than 250. Is there any objection for me bringing forth a motion to the Board to approve the list of purchases and contracts rated than 250 through March 26, 2024?
I believe we have to hear the presentation first. And the cow.
We can move it forward unless there's an objection. Otherwise, we have to recess and come back after Cal. Which we can do, which we can do.
I would personally, I think it'd be better to recess and then come back after Cal.
This parliamentarian. So I just make a motion to recess at this point.
Until the until defined time.
Yeah. Until.
End of Cal.
Yeah.
So we will recess. I'll make a motion to recess the special meeting until the end to reconvene after the end of Cal.
Second.
We are in recess.
Oh, we have to vote.
Any debate? Hearing none? Would it devote? We can do it a voice vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Nay.
Aye.
Motion passes, we are in recess. I will now pass it on to Kelly for Cal.
Actually. You ready? Okay. All right, I'm going to call the Board of Trustees, come to the whole, meeting back into order. We are at item three A for special recognition. Miss Sunny?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly and trustees. On April 23rd, 2024, CCSD and districts across the nation will celebrate National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. In honor of National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, the Board will recognize the three remaining CCSD-employed drivers who have collectively given over 100 years of service to our district. Susan Singleton with 36 years of service. Brenda Munjen with 36 years of service. Pamela Munjen with 30 years of service. There are also a host of drivers serving our district who are employed by our service provider, First Student. The most senior drivers employed by First Student are Yvonne Perry, 44 years of service. Ms. Patricia Grant, who had to leave to attend another engagement, who has 44 years of service. And Ms. Quida Hayward, 39 years of service. We invite the public to show your gratitude for all of our bus drivers on April 23rd, 2024, National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. James Lynch, Executive Director of Transportation, to the podium to introduce these very special members of the CCSD community.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce these six amazing, well, five right now. You've missed the six amazing women that have a combined 229 years of service to our district and serving our children. I also have with me Gary Reese from First Student, Senior Location Manager for First Student. So I wanted to take a quick second just to give you a quick recap on just some of the things that I've learned about each of them. I'll start with Ms. Hayward. Ms. Hayward is assigned to the Azalea Bus Lot on our North Charleston area. She has been with the district for 39 years as she joined us in 1985. She's a proud graduate of Baptist Hill, class of 1980. Ms. Hayward initially started with the district as an admin in the front office at Meminger and soon became a bus driver. Ms. Hayward has served the North Charleston area for the past 12 years. She explained explained to me that she always meets her students where they were without judgment and focuses on building trust with them throughout the school year. In addition to her bus driver duties, Ms. Hayward is involved with Feeding the Hungry program that delivers food to our families in need. She's also very involved with supporting her coworkers as she started a fund that basically helps provide birthday cakes for her coworkers on their birthday. Because she feels that everybody should should feel special on their birthdays. Since 1985, Ms. Hayward has only missed two weeks of work and both of those weeks were due to deaths in her family. Ms. Perry. Forty-four years. I just from talking to Ms. Perry, can I also learn that she is retiring from her CCSD duties with 44 years? Teacher assistant. Yes, but she's going to go down to one job. She'll do that for at least 54 years, I think. She's Ms. Perry's also assigned to our Azalea lot where she serves our special needs students. Ms. Perry has been a driver for 44 years. She joined in 1980. Ms. Perry graduated from Bonds Wilson High School and attended St. Augustine College in Raleigh, North Carolina, majoring in early childhood education. Ms. Perry's first job after leaving college was working with special needs students at Charles Web Center. Her experience working with special needs students provided her with an opportunity to help establish special needs programs at Mary Ford, Berry Elementary School, Hunley Park, and A.C. Cochrane, where she has worked for the past 20 years as a teacher assistant. Ms. Perry has been a bus driver since she was a junior at Bonds Wilson. When she drove a bus, they were all stick shift. And in order to operate the wheelchair ramp, you had to use a manual hand crank, I believe, is what I was told. When Ms. Perry enters a classroom, students will often refer to her as Pretty Perry. That nickname was given to her years ago by a former student because he said, "Ms. Perry is always smiling and is always happy to see." And we're happy to see you as well, so you're making me smile too. All right, my CCSD drivers. So we have three remaining CCSD drivers that still are with us and hopefully will still be with us for quite a while to go. I'm going to start with Ms. Pamela Munjen. Ms. Munjen is the baby of the group. She's had 31 years. She started her career in 1993. Ms. Munjen works out of our Hollywood Bus Lot and she serves our special needs students. She's also a proud graduate of Baptist Hill High School, class of 83. Pam also graduated from Trident Tech as a pharmacist tech. Ms. Munjen's first job with the district was working as a TA with Baptist Hill Special Needs Students. The experience working with special needs families motivated Pam to become a full-time special needs bus driver. Throughout her entire career, Pam has always opened to has opted to serve our exceptional students. Ms. Munjen has always requested special needs routes as she believes these students require special attention and love. In 2015, Ms. Munjen had a medical emergency on her bus. Because of her medical background, she quickly realized that she was it was a serious situation and immediately took steps to provide medical attention. Due to her quick intervention, she was able to get the situation under control and was able to keep the student calm and focused. To the point when the paramedics arrived, they asked Ms. Munjen to escort the child in the ambulance to the hospital. In 2015, Ms. Munjen was recognized as School Bus Driver of the Year. In her free time, Ms. Munjen enjoys traveling and seeking new adventures. Thank you, Pam. Ms. Susan Singleton. Ms. Six Ms. Singleton works at our Azalea lot and has been a safety trainer for the past 20 years. She has 36 years as a school bus driver for the district and she graduated from Fort Johnson High School, which is now James Allen Charter High School. For the past 20 years, she's probably trained almost, we we figure about 1,300 bus drivers throughout our district. Susan, despite her quiet, reserved disposition, she's earned the nickname from her peers as SARD, as she is a no-nonsense trainer with high expectations. Ms. Singleton has also 30 years of nursing experience through her time with the Sisters of Charity Organization. In 1994, Ms. Singleton was recognized as CCSD CCSD Bus Driver of the Year. Thank you, Susan. Ms. Brenda Munjen, sister-in-law to Pam, also works out of our Hollywood Bus Lot. Ms. Munjen has been a CCSD bus driver for 37 years as she joined the district in 1987. Ms. Munjen is also a graduate of Baptist Hill High School, class of 81. Ms. Ms. Munjen's journey to becoming a bus driver started in April of 1987, when she lost her five-year-old daughter. Ms. Munjen explained that during this low point in her life, she recognized that she needed a job where she would be working with children every day. Ms. Munjen's heart was full of love and she needed children to share it with. Four months after her daughter passed, Ms. Munjen obtained her CDL and became a full-time bus driver. For the past 37 years, Ms. Munjen has worked exclusively in the Hollywood area where she continues to share her love with children. Thank you, Brenda.
Many thanks to each of you. Trustees, if you could join us in the front for a photo, I would be grateful. Thank you. Right this way, please. Thank you for your service to our students.
Yeah, over to them for Ms. Huggins.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kelly. Tonight Superintendent's Report will overview our work around literacy and provide you some progress on Board Goal One, which focuses on groups of students, our Black and Hispanic fifth graders reading on grade level mid-year, as well as all of our students reading on grade level by fifth grade. The first slide here gives you a brief overview of I-Ready. We use I-Ready, as you know, to progress monitor how students are progressing towards their meet and exceed status on SC Ready at the end of the year. We also use it as a way to support students throughout the year. So we're gonna show a brief, brief video, about three minutes, to make sure you understand and hear from teachers how they use I-Ready in the classrooms to support student learning. Maggie?
The I-Ready program has a system of personalized lessons. It's designed to fill a student's knowledge gap, and it helps every student reach their grade-level proficiency. Our scholars have become very thoughtful analytical readers. They have productive struggles in the classroom, and they are learning to work through their math problems and find the best way to solve them. I-Ready also enables us to monitor our scholars' learning and adjust their assignments as needed. We have seen positive gains on the SC Ready assessment due in part to our instructional practices in which we use the I-Ready data to help guide our instruction, and it has resulted in positive student engagement and gains in both ELA and math.
I see it as a driving tool that allows students to progress monitor. It allows us to see where the students are, which helps us make decisions to drive the students to where they need to be. But it allows us to meet them at their individualized level. It also allows us to get that one-on-one understanding of how students feel, not only academically, but how they're feeling as far as their confidence. And when they have that one-on-one time with you, they're very confident in their ability to achieve and master the standards, and it shows in whole group instruction as well. And it influences the environment because it is a huge motivation for the students. They enjoy the lessons, it's fun, it's engaging, and they make those connections. Lots of times, if students have done a lesson that we're currently covering, they volunteer those connections. Ms. Adewale, I remember on I-Ready, it showed us how to do it this way, and I welcome the connections that are being made.
It's fun because it's like you're playing math games. It's kind of like a regular game, but instead you have to think of it as a working game, like you're working to go to get a treat or get good grades or like you're earning a reward. So it's kind of like multiplication, adding, division, subtracting, and it can help you in many different ways.
So the I-Ready scores that they get is just a huge impact on how I teach the classroom. Here at Stoner Park, we have something called Acceleration Time, where they're on I-Ready based on what subject area they're focused on today. And I also pull small groups based on what information they need, based on their I-Ready. I go to the teacher toolbox that I already provide, so you get extra instruction for small groups. So the scholars that are fluent with the I-Ready skills and the fifth grade standards, they're on I-Ready to boost their skills even higher in their standards. While those are slightly behind, I pull in small groups to work with them individually to help get those basic facts down, to improve their studies and strengths, and therefore to become higher throughout the fifth grade career.
I-Ready prepares me by giving me steps to master a difficult equation.
I-Ready impacts student outcomes because it really personalizes their learning. Students start out at different points, and it allows us to create lessons that build on what they know and move them to the next level. It allows us to identify gaps in student learning and helps us to fill in those gaps, and it also helps us to be very intentional with our instruction. It also provides us the opportunity to conference with our students, set goals with them, and celebrate their successes.
You got to hear more tonight about I-Ready as a tool for instruction. So it's not only progress monitoring, but it's also a tool that teachers use to build lessons and to instruct teachers on grade level, which we think is a testament to the exciting results that you're going to see tonight. So I'm about to share with you, Maggie, the next slide here. Both are progress toward all students reading on grade level by grade five, as well as our African-American and Hispanic students reading on grade level. So you'll see here two board goals around literacy. One, the percentage of Black and African-American and Hispanic fifth-grade students reading on grade level will increase from twenty-five-point-five percent in July of twenty-two to sixty-point-seven in July of two thousand and twenty-seven, as measured by SC Ready. Again, that's the summative test we take at the end of the year, or the spring target of thirty-nine-point-four. You'll see in this presentation tonight where we were in the fall, where we are in the winter, excitedly well on our way to meeting that spring target. So the first slide we'll look at, Maggie, next, is all fifth-grade students. We want to start with all fifth-grade students and look at their progress. You'll see here, see on this slide, exponential growth. Exponential growth between fall twenty-three of all fifth-grade students in the system with forty-seven-point-two percent being meets or exceeds with a significant growth between fall and winter to sixty-four and a half percent. This is the same cohort group of students. So I just want to pause right there, and everybody give principals and teachers and the folks around us who are doing great work a round of applause, because you don't see that a lot. So what really excites me even more is that this is the same cohort group of students right here, you'll see. And if you look at, this is a different cohort group of students last year. You see, both cohorts of students were performing similarly when they came in. But look at the change in the growth between this cohort group of students last year and this cohort group of students this year. It speaks to the work we're doing around the instructional framework that we talked to you about this year, professional learning communities, building relationships with kids through that restorative practice-type setting. It also speaks to the coherent viable curriculum that Ms. Simmons and her team, the Associate Superintendent Jackie and Jennifer have put on that viable curriculum instructional rigorous strategies that work for kids. What's even more exciting, if you look here at these bars, it shows you the progression of students into different ranges of performance from fall to winter. So at the beginning of the year, when we assess students, seventeen percent of students were projected to score exceeds. That over-doubled from fall to winter. Again, a very significant change from last year. So this again is all fifth-grade students reading on grade level by grade five. Again, really exciting things. Next slide there, Maggie. You'll see similarly here, if we look literacy grades three through five. So we looked again, your goal is all fifth-grade students reading on grade level by grade five. But if we look at literacy for all students, grades three through five, you'll see some very similar promising results. This year's cohort of students in grades three through five, forty-eight percent of them were scoring at meets or exceeds in fall compared to sixty-three percent in winter. A lot of times nationally, you see mid-year progress plateau or even regress. This is a significant accomplishment for schools, for teachers, for leaders, for our academic team, for our associates who are working so hard. Again, if you look down at those proficiency levels and the advancement, again, over double the percentage of students from fall to winter are projected to be exceeds on SC Ready when they take it in just a few weeks. To the next slide, Maggie. You'll see here the group of students that we are examining for Board Goal One around literacy, for Black and Brown students reading on grade level by fifth grade. Again, a significant accomplishment for schools, for teachers, for leaders. In the fall, the cohort of fifth-grade African-American and Hispanic students reading at or above grade level was about twenty percent. We're now about thirty-eight percent with an eighteen percent gain simply from fall to winter. You saw last year, again, a different cohort group of students who started at the same rate grow only minimally, three and a half percent. Again, another significant growth point is if you see the number of students in the exceeds range, in the blue, on the fall twenty-three to winter twenty-four, from four percent when they started school to now nearly fifteen percent in the middle of the year. And these tests were administered January, February. So these results are over a month old at this point. So this is a projection of how students will do again when they take SC Ready in just a few weeks. The last slide I have to share with you today is how students are progressing toward those stretch goals. You'll see here the average number of students meeting half of their stretch goal. The top row is this year compared to students in those same grades last year. Again, different cohorts of groups of students unless you look longitudinally. But you'll notice here that more and more students are meeting their stretch goals, and we attribute it to the things that you heard earlier in the video with teachers building lessons based on student needs, the work we've done around PLCs, the creative things you see going on at schools like Pinehurst Elementary, where they're embracing a co-teaching model, the work we're doing across the district on rigorous curriculum and curriculum assessments and making sure we're looking at opportunities for student growth and refining those when we're looking at look-for. So we have a lot to be encouraged about as we soon begin the spring testing season. Do you have any questions for me around these literacy, these very impressive literacy student results?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mrs. Dunbar?
No, I have no questions. Very impressive. I look forward to spring testing and getting the results in the fall.
Same, Mr. Robertson. Thank you.
Yes, it's very encouraging to see the number of students in grades three through five, grades approaching and exceeding the literacy goals. I do have a question with regards to slides five and seven. What services will be provided to the fifth-grade students who do not meet the goals this summer to help them get ready for sixth grade? And what are the plans for the upcoming school year when they do move on to sixth grade?
Thank you for that, Dr. Temple. I'm gonna throw it over to Mrs. Simmons to talk more about summer and what we do with students as we prepare for the new year, starting, it's supposed to start tomorrow, but we, or Wednesday, but we delayed. But starting this week, we'll begin our spring SDRs, our data reviews with principals. And we'll hear firsthand from principals what additional supports that they feel they need between now with this last big push for testing to provide more supports to students. If they need central resources, if they need more intervention support, if they need more support services from Mrs. Simmons and her team. She can talk more fluidly about what specific strategies she has in mind, particularly for summer and preparation for sixth grade.
Thank you for the question, Dr. Temple. So a standard intervention or layer of support that you will find in every school, not unique to particular schools, is the reading intervention approach, where we make sure that students in designated groups, depending on where they land on their scores, they have the benefit of receiving tailored scripted instruction from an interventionist. That's one of the things we will in future years look to expand and make sure that we are putting high-quality, high-qualified teachers in front of our neediest scholars. Because if they are struggling, we want to make sure that the bang for the buck is maximized in terms of if it's a pull-out model, where we're pulling small groups of children out to receive intense intervention. So our summer enhancement, our summer enrichment programs tailor particularly third graders. Read to succeed legislation requires that we provide intervention, summer enrichment, some type of extra layer of support for our third graders in particular. But for particularly, you asked about the fifth-grade scholars who are struggling. The idea at the building level, when you heard in the video, I think it was Heather Burke, talked about, or maybe it was Mr. Landfrey. He talked about an acceleration period. So what we do understand is if students are lagging and struggling, we want to be able to teach them at their grade level and scaffold and make sure that we're catching them up little by little. And so schools have embedded in their daily master schedules the opportunity for these targeted periods of the day where we can provide systematic instruction based on where they are in their reading skills. And so a couple of elements are always present in our buildings in terms of support and how we make sure our kids are along and along making progress. Dr. Temple?
So, so we have things that we can do when the students are within the school. But what about, I'm asking about the summer. I am concerned about our fifth graders who are not at their level reading, and then we have the summer gap, and then they're going into sixth grade where reading gets pretty heavy, especially in their science and social studies classes.
Absolutely. So I'll remind you of maybe six months ago when we were talking about moving forward minus ESSER dollars. So for the last three, four years, we had the benefit of ESSER dollars to provide a comprehensive summer school program for all of our scholars. We had it in place for all grades at elementary, middle school, and even credit recovery at the high school. I remember telling the board back in the fall that the five million dollars or so that I had encumbered for summer camps was then going to teacher bonuses. So the truth, the hard truth about it is we sacrifice some things in terms of making sure that we can provide the resources and the promises that we've made. And so I did forfeit a sizable amount of money for the teacher bonuses that would have typically gone to summer enrichment. So whereas in previous years, we had the benefit of serving all elementary grades, this summer, with a limited budget, we are doing the third-grade Read to Succeed as prescribed by the state. That's the honest truth of it. And so there are many schools who have the resources and the funding to stand up their own summer enrichment programs. So that happens regularly. There are many schools who have the benefit of extra funding, who can also have summer, pardon me, after-school programming. So between the after-school programming in various schools, the summer programming in various schools, the third-grade Read to Succeed camp that the district stands up, there are layers of support. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that as we move forward in subsequent years that we'll have the benefit of a more robust summer program.
Okay, and I guess where I'm gonna come from then is that, you know, I'm happy and supportive that we were able to use ESSER dollars to support our teachers, who is the most important person in the classroom, is the teacher. However, I think it behooves us as a board to know what would the summer camp cost for us to have something for our fifth-grade students? Because obviously, you know, we're always looking at the budget, but then what are the consequences? And to me, the consequences of our fifth graders moving on to sixth grade without the literacy And to me, the consequences of our fifth graders moving on to sixth grade without the literacy support they need is a big consequence. So I'd like to see a budget proposal on that.
So what we'll do, Dr. Temple, thank you for that, is when we meet with principals, principals give us pretty honest feedback. And so when we meet with principals and SDRs over the two next two, two weeks, two to three weeks, we'll get feedback on them. Oftentimes, principals, particularly for summer programs, ask to stand up those programs themselves. So we will get feedback from principals on which groups of their students they believe are most needy and what they, what kind of support they want from us on that. And we'll circle back with the board and share that with you.
And then if there are some schools that have the ability to offer those programs, it would be good to make it accessible to the schools that don't have those because it's, it may be a smaller, you know, number and then parents could possibly take advantage of the program in in schools that maybe aren't their neighborhood schools.
Absolutely. So Ms. Simmons and I'll work together. We'll circle back on that. Thank you, Dr. Temple.
Thank you. You mentioned, Ms. Simmons, you brought up the state statute. And so everyone here knows how that two fifty K list was a thorn in my side. And I'm sure you probably now understanding that this reading on grade level by grade five is a thorn in my side as well. By grades, by fifth grade. To to Dr. Temple's point, State Code fifty-nine, chapter one fifty-five talks about reading on grade level by third grade. Are we ever gonna go back to revisit that so that that could be one of our goals? And that would take some of the pressure off of trying to have them ready to read by sixth grade because we would have already accomplished that in third grade according to state code.
So so we have a updated Read to Succeed legislation that passed very recently that will in subsequent years require that we not only provide summer support for third graders, but we have to envelop first graders and second graders along with the third graders to do just what you're describing, close the gaps earlier and earlier so that by the time they're exiting fifth grade, Dr. Temple, they're not at a disadvantage.
We can talk about, thank you for that, Ms. Simmons. We can, we can certainly as a board, talk about the development of a goal around third grade, Mrs. Roberson. Because the 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 first year the state summatively assesses students is third grade. However, this is why this goal, you know, the national, most of the national research is around reading on grade level by third grade, grade three, right? But the reason the goal is the re, the the goal is because of the lack of summative assessment, you know, prior to grade three. So we could, we could certainly explore how we might do that. But we certainly understand, and so do our principals, the need to have kids reading on grade level as early as possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Watley, do you have anything to add?
Now that you called on me. Yes, and I remember. The last time we did this literacy update, it was last quarter, correct?
We updated you in the fall. Yes, ma'am.
How, how are we tracking from those numbers in the fall? I know that we were way ahead and we were projected to be way ahead. Did we hit the mark? Did we go over the mark? Did we fall a little short?
Yes, we, we are on track to exceed the spring target for African American and Hispanic students. With, we're at thirty-seven point seven percent proficiency with the target being thirty-nine point four. So we are on track to exceed that goal. Yes, ma'am. And then all the other areas, we've made double-digit gains. So this growth is significant.
It's but but between the last update and this update?
Yes, ma'am. That the, actually, these, these numbers here are exactly that. That's from fall. From fall twenty-three to winter twenty-four, for all students, for example, it was a seventeen point three percent gain, which again is 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 significant.
Right. I I don't think you're understanding what I'm asking. And I'm, and I'm not sure if I'm articulating it well. We, we just did this a few months ago. Okay, so in the twenty-four year, didn't we?
Twenty-three, yes, ma'am. And in, in the, in the fall, we updated you as to where students were on their reading progress. But this is how they've grown since then.
I thought we had done it even.
You may be thinking of middle school. Middle school and we've done math. So we've done a lot. You ought to be commended for your focus on student outcomes. So we focused on math earlier and we updated you in the fall.
For the literacy?
Yeah, this is the winter.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Ms. Watley.
Thank you.
I, I think the results are great. I I commend both you, Ms. Simmons. I think it's, it shows we're on the right track.
I have a question. I wanted to know, do we have grants or Title One funding for some of the Title One schools for summer enrichment?
Yes, that's what they use. They typically use their Title One dollars to provide both after-school and summer programming. Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's all I have.
Yes.
So how do we secure the student attending either for after-school remediation or the summer? We can't demand it like the school year. So how do we effectively reach the students that need it?
You're absolutely right. So what we find, what we found over time, we may invite five hundred scholars. Perhaps half may show up. And then what we find thereafter is that the longer the program goes, the the attendance drops off. So what we decided a couple of summers ago is we would layer on not only the academic component, but also enrichment to make sure that they are coming and looking forward to some type of extracurricular activity, whether it's field trips or some type of karate, whatever it is that's gonna draw our scholars in and make them excited about coming each day because it is a challenge to get scholars in on on the summer. And then there's vacation. There's just a lot of reasons not to come during the summer. So that's what we've tried to do. I would say, Dr. C would say, during the year attendance has been a big burden for us. So imagine getting kids up in the summertime, but it has worked. I will share when we circle back with you what the cost could be to layer on summer enrichment. But we were averaging around six million dollars during the ESER bundle of money to put forth a robust summer program. So no small feat. But nonetheless, we do want to provide scholars and families the benefit of high-quality summer enrichment programming.
And is, is that as effective as having the intervention during the school year?
So again, you must have read the Read to Succeed legislation. So we do believe that teachers are the first interventionist. So we're expecting core instruction to happen, you know, during the classroom period. But we're also expecting teachers to be able to pull small groups and deliver and deliver where scholars are lagging. And so I think there's no one-shot solution. So we want to be able to do all of them and do them well. Provides a robust core, but also solid enrichment and summer enhancement as well. So we feel like if we can do all of those things at a high level, we make progress, like you saw in the video and saw on the slide deck that Ms. Huggins prepared for you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Are we offering extra help to parents at home to help their kids get on, read on grade level? Me, cuz that extra help at home, the extra books, cuz I know where I used to be, we sent books home. We sent little readers home for parents who asked. But if, even if they don't ask, we can offer that to them to help.
Yes. So my per, per view, I don't wanna misrepresent or pretend to know. My point of view is direct services to the schools. I would think the associates might have more intimate detailed knowledge about how schools are then supporting families because that's the goal, to make sure that we deliver, but also families are equipped to support their students at at home as well so that we're a partnership. But in terms of this explicit types of programming that's happening at the building level for families, it varies from school to school. So I, I can't really articulate well at a high level on that for you.
And we've piloted some efforts, you know, downtown in the D twenty PCP, for example, the family support coaches. Those were some of the goals and for some of our parent advocates. We just don't have enough results yet. Like Ms. Simmons said, to really know the impact those things had on student outcomes and/or on parents themselves.
Ms. Bailey, I can speak for Learning Services. What we've started doing in D twenty-three and during our parades, instead of giving out candy, we give out books. So I'm looking forward to see, you know, if there's some type of impact with them getting books instead of candy at parades.
Ms. Watley, did you have another question?
I, yes, thank you. I, I was speaking with Dr. Zachary Williams at Tred Tech today, who is a professor in English. And I sat down with him and he was also a, a public school English teacher. And he, he was talking to me about some things that are very concerning. And one thing he notices about the children that in high school and then also coming into college, they are lacking a curiosity about the world and concepts and ideas and things like that. And there's also the concern about the chatbots and AI helping them write papers and of course, using the internet to craft ideas versus them being able to problem solve and think things through and being curious to find answers and put the work in to start with an idea and then craft arguments and counter arguments and things like that. And so as we're going into literacy, I've just been kind of chewing on what he said today. If, if there's a way that we can begin to capture their imaginations and getting them curious and wanting to work through problems and things like that, getting them to think. He, he used the word apathy. There's a lot of apathy, especially post-COVID with these kids. And I, and I think probably computers and social media and in microwave society and everything's probably, there's probably a lot of contributing factors. So I think that perhaps that's an opportunity for CCSD and our literacy to begin to maybe probe and come up with some ideas.
Yes, ma'am. I do think the textbook series we just adopted, that's grounded in teaching reading through building background and through content areas.
I agree.
Blowing the world through science and social studies content, enhancing reading skills through that. Right? So, so I feel like that will particularly at the elementary level, give us a, a solid foundation for building that type of curiosity about the world. And so I think that's a good thing.
While you're on that point, I, I also discussed with him the, the curriculum adoption and the text adoption. And I discussed with him some of the concerns that were given about certain concepts in the CKLA being too advanced for elementary, too complicated. And he and I both are in agreement that it's good to challenge the kids because they're, they will live up to the, to the standard and expectations that you place for them. And I believe that they're capable. We discussed how, like my grandmother, you would never want to sit down and play a game of Scrabble with my grandmother. She would obliterate you. And so, you know, anyway, he, he was in agreement with, with the text adoption that we, we just did and, and what you just pointed out, so.
So I do have, I have two, was that, that was the end of it?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I do have two questions. The, both the slide five, slide seven show essentially the same numbers. How, what do we point at as to the why between a three percent growth trend and a seventeen percent growth trend? That's just so dramatic. I'm sure someone asked why.
So to be honest, we were in this very room receiving this information from the, the good people at iReady. And so we have to consider a few things. The, the curriculum of, of choice that we've had, we've seen sizable gains, just having a solid, viable, guaranteed curriculum across this entire system. I, I re-watched, just for whatever reason, last night, the video package we put out on EL a couple of months back. It, it talked, we talked about the idea that when scholars matriculate from a North Charleston school to a West Ashley school, to a James Island school, to a Mount Pleasant school, they have the same high-quality instructional materials at their ready. That can't be understated. We also have invested heavily in our professional learning community so that we're analyzing student work so that we know where the shortcomings or the gaps in student learning are in a way where teachers can then inform reteaching practices. I think that's huge. And then finally, the instructional framework that's standard across our entire system. Because we are so vast and varied, that opens up the door for a lot of variance among schools. What we've worked really hard to do is to make some things really standard across our entire system. That instructional framework is relevant and applicable to all teachers, all schools across our system. So it gives everybody a baseline of how to enter, how to enter a lesson and what happens during the course of a lesson, as well as how to wrap it up. We believe all of those things have made a difference in our scores. And I'll also say it was Mr. Grabowski last year who pointed out that we were comparing MAP to iReady, apples to oranges. So we've now had the benefit of administering iReady for consecutive years. That allows for scholars to have familiarity with the instrument itself. I believe that contributes as well. We get better when we're more familiar with an instrument or a platform. I think it all counts. I think it all applies. We, at Learning Services at least, we've tried to make sure that there are few things that we hold tight to. We call them our big rocks, our priorities. And then there's some fluidity, some flexibility that schools can, can implement that makes it unique to their own buildings because every building is really different and unique and comes with different challenges. And so we feel like those big rocks have been our advantage in moving the needle forward. And that's our goal and our intention and our charge to keep, to keep the needle moving forward.
Michelle, spot on, Mr. Kelly. It's consistency, it's systems, it's talent in the classroom, it's impeccable leadership with everybody working toward the same goals. So I applaud this board. You didn't adopt a whole nother set of goals when you came on board. So if I were to walk in a classroom, almost anywhere in the system and ask about the board goals, most people would be able to say, we want all students to be reading on grade level by grade five. And that's how Dr. Swearingen is holding her principals accountable, how you'll hold me accountable, and how Dr. Swearingen's principals hold their teachers accountable. Teachers are exceptional in this system. I can't say enough great things about them. We've professionally developed them. They know where we're going. They know how to get there. And they, they plan, do, they plan, they teach, they study the results, and then they fix it. And we're doing so much better about keeping those systems in place so that people understand how to do that. So these, these gains are, are significant. And again, I think it's consistency, systems and, and talent.
So I, I spent the last, the better part of, I don't know, last ten workdays or something in classrooms, in, in schools. And I can personally attest to just how unbelievably phenomenal our teachers are. Passionate beyond what I realized, I think, have a new appreciation for just how passionate these, these folks are. My concern is, Ms. Simmons, you just said that it was consistency across the district.
Yes, sir.
And yet we just had an adoption of a textbook that were three different, well, three different styles, writers, publishers, et cetera, across our different age groups, uh, across the vertical articulation. Do you, do you have any reservations about the lack of consistency that we just adopted? Taking into account what you just said.
Solid, solid question. I think it's a fair ask. So when I speak of consistency across the system in terms of practices, so we think about it this way, a three-pronged approach, the curriculum, the instruction, and then the assessment. And so the curriculum is what we teach, instruction, how we teach, and of course, assessment, how we measure. And so I, I don't want to understate or undervalue textbooks, but the textbooks, they're just A two. They're A two. But the textbooks, they're just A two. They're A two. And for the last twelve years, we've had no consistency in textbooks. We haven't had an adoption in over ten years. And so we haven't had the benefit of that consistent tool. So I'm confident at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and then again, at the high school level, we have the right protocols and practices in place to support the teaching and learning. So despite the textbook, teachers are pulling in resources, they are pulling in novel studies, they're pulling in all tools of the tree, right? To make sure that that textbook allows them to teach high standards. So if the, if teachers are embracing studying and implementing standards at a high level, the textbook is just going to allow them to do that well. So absent the textbook, right, we could still teach at a high level if we layer on a, a strong curriculum for teachers. Um, and so no, to answer your question about reservations, I, I do not have any reservations that as a Learning Services team, that they're all around me, that we can support teachers by developing the curriculum that envelops the textbook that allows for high teaching and learning practices.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, I guess we'll, we'll, I'll leave that there. I've got a lot of, um, a lot of kind of thoughts that I, I want to kind of debrief with you and Mrs., uh, again, if, if one of you guys have time. Yeah. So the, the last, uh, point or question I have here is, uh, on our, actually to, to you, uh, Ms. Bailey. Uh, as our strategic education, um, I, I think I've asked this in the past, but I object to, um, the focus on or separation of, of people by race, by, of students by race. And so I think we as a board need to look at this goal. Uh, you just said there's, we didn't change any goals. Here I go. Uh, because I, I don't think it's proper to have a board goal that's focused on, that's focused on a particular group of people that is defined by a trait that is not in their control. So I think, I think it, it warrants conversation to adjust the language of our board goal to something more like low performing students or students who are at X percent or something like that, rather than defining someone by the way they look. I just don't think that's proper. And I would actually make the argument that is on its face racist. By definition, it has to be.
I just wanted to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the, the reasoning behind you going by the ethnic, ethnic groups is because the black and Hispanic community are the, the low, low poverty areas have the most struggle and issues. So the gains that they are seeing is pushing them forward to achieve more. That's why their focus is on that.
That, thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. You're, 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 you're right in that thinking. The state, Mr. Kelly, also for purposes of school identification, looks at student group performance just like this. And schools are designated based on how their student groups perform, based on how students with disabilities perform, how students, um, student groups perform. Mrs. Roberts or Ms. Dr. Gare, I think I took the microphone earlier, but if you want to give up, give more specificity around this.
Anita, I would just, and, and please do, please, uh, Mr. Roberts, please do. But, but I would, I would posit you this. Just because the state looks at it that way does not make it right. I'm talking about what is actually correct in a society and, and splitting people up based on how much melanin is in their skin. And actually, not in my opinion, by actual definition is racist. So if we focus on a particular race, we, we have to by definition be not focusing on another.
So as a system, Mr. Kelly, we focus on all school, all students. And that's why this presentation started with all fifth graders.
I appreciate that.
But, uh, but as we look at student groups and as we, as educators break down the data and look to examine where the gaps are in student performance, we typically see that it's pupils in poverty, and, and it's, um, students with disability, and it's multilingual learners that perform at lower levels than their peers. Um, and many times their peers are white. So if we don't focus on those data points, is challenging for us to think about how we can ever grow those students to where they need to be. So that's why in this FY twenty-five budget cycle, we're focused on resourcing schools based on the number of kids. Um, not by race, by those designations, pupils in poverty, students with disabilities, and, um, it's multilingual learners.
So I, then, then, then our board goal ought to perhaps be exactly that. Students in poverty should hit a percentage, or students who are non-native English speakers should be really, you, you see.
I do, I, I see, I, I understand where.
And, and I guess this is more directed to, to my fellow board members. I, that, that would be, you know, pretty of the whole supposed to be relatively formal, so.
You're running a conversation, what I'm hearing is they're addressing cultural issues that are unique within people groups in order to try and break cultural issues that are holding them back or holding them down so that they can overcome the challenges. And traditionally in white communities, that hasn't been the same challenge. We have different challenges. Is that, is that fair?
Might be, it's a topic that we could take up at a board retreat and talk more about it and more about your philosophy and where you as a board want to go. And Mrs. Roberts can maybe be part of that, if that's okay, Mr. Kelly. We can, we can take this topic up and have more fluid discussion about that. Is that, is that okay? All right. I'll put it on, on, on our list. Thank you. And thank you for that, Mr. Kelly. Thank you for your honesty.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Roberts, did you want to add to the conversation? I, I don't want to cut you off if you, I'm sorry. She said to
The board retreat.
Put a pin in it, yeah. I mean, she didn't. Sorry. That was the Ed Kelly interpretation. Okay. Anything further, Mrs. Huggins?
Um, no, no, sir. That's all for, for the superintendent's update. Thank you for the time.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item five A.
Good evening. Um, this is an action item. I'm going to read the motion that we're going to set after the, um, the presentation. But the motion is to advance the school renewal plans to the, uh, to the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four board meeting for consideration of the board. Um, Ms. Anita, do you have, uh, president?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, Dr. Gare and Mrs. Roberts, that report up in Mrs. Simmons' office are going to quickly really quickly review the district strategic and school renewal plan. Um, this is something that the board does annually. Um, I know if you have any other questions, some of you reached out. I'm grateful for that. Um, we stand ready with the associates behind me or alongside me to answer your questions, Ms. Roberts.
Um, good evening. So state regulation forty-three two sixty-one requires initially developed or updates of the five-year district strategic plan and school renewal plans to be submitted to the South Carolina Department of Education at the end of April each year. We're currently in an update year for our five-year strategic plan that was previously approved by our board. So generally speaking, these plans serve two purposes. One, to provide evidence of continuous improvement. And two, to serve as accountability documentation that the district and all the schools are following state and federal regulations and statutes. So rather than a creation of something new, these plans attempt to document within the state's required template what we have been doing and what we plan to do. So additionally, there are funding sources that are mentioned in the plans. These reflect how action steps have been funded in the past, how they are currently being funded, or how they may be funded in the future. So when you're considering the plans and the funding sources, it is for planning purposes only. The district and schools are aware that, um, GOF budgets and title, title budgets, all of that has to be approved each year. So the state plans are not meant to be any type of budgetary document. Um, as such, approving the plans in no way obligates the board or binds the district to funding or allocations. Again, it is a living document that, um, provides us a way of, um, well, it, a living document that will evolve and change as circumstances change, if that makes sense. So, um, you actually need to go back one, sorry. Uh, during the annual update, we use data for the most recent report card to update our five-year and one-year interim goals in specific categories. You'll see those um, on the screen. We've also provided that color-coded copy, um, as an overview to show you how our district and school report cards, our board goals, interim goals, and our guardrails, um, actually have become the goals in the plan or strategies or action steps. So that's just an overview document for you to show the process. Go to the next. So in addition to using our most recent report card data, plans also demonstrate our compliance with other requirements. You're going to see those um, items on this slide. It's again, important to note that state plans are intended to be living documents for accountability, continuous improvement. They represent a point in time this year when we reflect on last year's data in order to plan for next year. And then the last slide. So in board docs, we did provide a link to a folder with all district and school plan updates for your review. You'll be able to continue your review of these plans over the next two weeks. Um, and ask any questions you may have before they come back for your final approval at the next, um, regular board meeting on April twenty-ninth. The next step after local board approval is submitting the plans to the South Carolina Department of Ed, which will, um, then approve the plans in late July or early August. And that basically concludes our presentation on our plans. Do you have any questions? I should say, are there any questions at this time? Because again, you do have that opportunity to continue asking questions.
I was asking this.
Thank you for emphasizing it's a living document and not budget restrictions.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Watley? Ms. Temple?
Um, just a couple of things, and I don't expect an answer right now because I know we're pressed for time. Just had one, uh, several concerns. One on slide three. Um, we're talking about goals and I, I'm just surprised that the goals are not stated as SMART goals. Because I think it's really important for us to have them as measurable goals. Because when we, when we gloss over them broadly like that, we, we can't measure them. So maybe that's a State Department thing, but I think we should have them as SMART goals.
Ma'am, um, they are stated as SMART goals. What that document actually does is just to show you the alignment. So it basically just provides, um, some of the information. That is not, those are not the complete goal, if that makes sense. You'll find those, um, goals in our district plan. You'll see those in that document. And they are, um, written as SMART goals. So thank you for that question and clarification. Appreciate it.
All right. And then I'm anticipating the reports for the fourth and eighth graders in science. When will we get those? Achievement reports for the fourth and eighth graders in science.
Um, right. We did not have that, um, assessment. We, the science, um, waiver is actually still in place. So they will not, um, test again. Well, let me take that back. Um, it will not count for accountability for this year. So we will not, um, have those scores to be able to share.
And then, um, I noticed on slide four, it was mentioned that there, the district was receiving feedback from diverse stakeholders. At some point, it'd be interesting to see what the feedback was, was coming from diverse stakeholders.
Ms. Thomas?
Um, I had an opportunity to go through several of the renewal plans. Um, and some of the plans, I could actually, um, hear the principal's voice, um, with their, um, actions and their, um, indicators. And it made sense. Um, in some of the reports, um, I didn't find substance. Um, so I would like to, um, between now and the next two weeks, because it's a living document, um, Ms. Huggins, um, and the associates. Uh, maybe we can spend some time talking about some of my concerns before it's turned into the State Department.
Happy to, Mrs. Robertson.
Okay. And then lastly, um, I'm not sure the calendar, but this is, this is concerning because just like the textbook adoption, we always are running up to the deadline on when it's due. And so it puts us as a board in a position of having to, um, rush to make an informed decision. And so I would like that, um, to see that when we develop our calendar, that we allow a little bit more time for us to, um, adequately review these, um, school renewal pa- um, plans.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson, for that feedback. We've, I've gotten it down here.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. I don't have any questions. Um, we're going to take a vote on this? Do I have a motion to move the, um, school renewal?
I, I, I make a motion to advance the school renewal plans to the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four Board of, Board of Trustees meeting for consideration of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Pass your votes.
Ms. Trudy, that should be seconded by, um, Dr. Temple.
Do I have a second? And the motion passes. I hand it back to you.
Um, Mrs. Robertson, would you like to take, uh, section six, since, uh, Mr. Calhoun's not here?
Okay. The Audit and Finance Committee meeting was held on April the ninth, and it was a very robust, um, committee meeting. Um, thanks again to, um, Mr. Prentice and his team for providing us with that, um, information. The ninety-day report is going to be presented by Ms. Huggins.
We'll, we'll pass it back over to Ms. Roberts. Um, Mrs. Robertson, thank you so much. Ms. Brooks, Ms. Roberts will give a quick overview of the ninety forty-five day average count.
So, um, during Audit and Finance last week, Ms. Kathy Milney and I shared a snapshot of average daily membership, or ADM, for the current year FY twenty-four ninety day. We also included comparisons to our current forty-five day and FY twenty-one through FY twenty-three ninety day reporting. So additionally, while the state and CCSD recognizes CE Williams as one school as a follow-up to a question during that Audit and Finance meeting, Ms. Huggins has already shared with the board the same ADM comparison for the two campuses that make up CE Williams. So overall, even though you will see some shifts in enrollment among schools across the district, which you usually see that information captured in the live-in attendant report that Mr. Roro and his team, um, typically share. Our current FY twenty-four ninety day ADM is the highest in the comparison years, um, reporting period and shows very little change from what we saw on the forty-fifth day. Um, while ninety day reporting provides us with progress monitoring and data verification, final reporting and verification completed for the one thirty-five day is actually what is utilized for funding purposes. Um, for our school, our schools and the student information team, they're actually in the process now of reporting and verifying the one thirty-five day data. Are there any questions?
Okay. We'll start questions. This is an information item. Ms. McKinnon, do you have questions? Ms. Bailey?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kelly?
How do you end up with a fractional body? Four, three of a student. Never seen that before.
So the way it works is that basically, um, it doesn't count like a head count, like when we're doing something like a child count or something like that. Um, it actually looks at the membership. So in other words, um, the attendance, um, or students that are enrolled, the amount of time that they're actually there.
Makes much more sense.
Any other questions?
No.
Yeah. No, I was talking to Mr. Kelly. Yeah. Mr. Karowski?
No.
Ms. Watley?
So I was going to ask questions along the lines of, um, can you explain it, everyday language? Average daily membership and what that means? And is this, are these numbers, um, per student? Um, a day? And what's that money used for? That kind of?
So basically, this is how the state determines. So basically, this is how the state determines how much funding we receive. When you think about it, you do, even though you can't have half of a, a student, like you said, we do consider this to be very similar to what you would have with how many students are actually enrolled in a school. But it is based on the number of enrolled days um, that a student is um, at that particular location.
So if they're truant, the, the figures would change, or if they get transferred to another school?
If they actually leave the district or withdraw?
Or go to a different school? Or is this, this does, this is just how many um, students we have enrolled in CCD, CCSD at large?
Well, we actually have it broken out by school right now.
That's why, and that's why I'm asking.
We haven't broken out by school now, but as, as long as they're still in the district, you're still counting that student just at a different location. So you might have um, part of that, the student enrollment days counting at one school, and the other um, half or whatever, counting at another school. But as long as they didn't leave the district, they would still be represented in our um, our student body or our student pool.
So I don't know, am I able to state the school name? Or is that confidential?
These are state reports.
Okay, so for exami- example, academic magnet is to saying that, that we only get $718.93 from the state for that school?
No, the, um, it's not one-to-one, and um, I'll be honest with you, I'm not able to tell you the exact financial information that's tied each one of this.
Basically, like for myself, that this is the first time that I'm looking at this in, in the public. Should the public look at this? This where I'm going with it. What we're seeing is this average daily membership, which we don't know what that means. And we're seeing a list of schools with the uh, columns of numbers.
I would think of it as this way, in simple terms, think of it as enrollment.
Okay.
And um, the way our funding is based, is based on the enrollment that a district has.
Okay.
And then there are special add-on funding, maybe I shouldn't get into that, but there are um, different, you know, you get different funding for a student who might be an ML student, or a student who might be a student with disabilities and.
So this is basically a breakdown of the allocation from the state to each school?
This is average enrollment. Just enrollment. Enrollment number of students.
These are seat counts.
That, no ma'am.
I'm thinking of the money.
You got it. That, that's why I hopped in there, because I, it's, it's average in, in.
Man, that's not very much money at all.
No, no.
Okay, these are actually people.
Then the funding formula is a little more complex that Mr. Prentice could get into.
I think all you need to say is there's a seat, and this is the amount of time that seat is occupied.
Okay.
By a student.
That makes a lot more sense, so thank you.
Thank you for the question.
We educators, we have so much, we have so many acronyms. Just a couple of comments. This is showing like four, uh, four-year trends. I'd really be interested in seeing what the trends have been, uh, pre-COVID to the current data. Is that, I have a sense that we've had a drop in enrollment. And then I wondered, do we um, conduct exit surveys when students um, the number of students change? And do we know, I, I think I heard you say that we, we do know if they're moving from one CCSD school to another. But I was also concerned that if we were losing students um, to either another CCSD school or a charter school, what might be the reasons if we had an exit survey? Because I think that would inform us is to, you know, any problems that we have. Because I, I get concerned when I hear um, people trying to, I would just be upfront. People trying to form another charter school because they have a perception that we're not providing some kind of services, when in fact, maybe we are or we should be. So I, I think, you know, any loss of students, we ought to know, why are we losing them? So that it informs us about how to make our neighborhood schools better and stronger.
So um, two things that I will say, one, um, this is the highest enrollment of this, um, of these 90-day reports that we're showing, so from 21 to 2024, right? So enrollment has not decreased. I think that's a really good thing. The second thing I would say about that is that um, while there is not necessarily a, a survey per se, there is an exit code. So um, when a student leaves a school, schools do find out why the student's leaving, and that's actually um, coded in our system. And we do look at those, we do look at that code, and as a matter of fact, that's um, how graduation rate documentation is, is done. Um, and dropout reporting, um, actually seven through 12.
I think the codes are good. I guess I would be looking for also, is there a qualitative statement that could be made that would inform us a little bit more?
Thank you, Dr. Temple. Are there any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question. Um, I see we have a, a report, a 90, a 90-day and a 45-day report for physically being in school. But do we have a 90 and a 45-day report for those kids that are enrolled virtually?
Those are actually included in these numbers, if that's one of the reasons why um, we support the idea of having a virtual school option, because we don't lose those students to uh, another um, outside entity. They stay within our district, that funding stays with um, CCSD as well. Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, I asked all my questions at Audit and Finance. So um, we will now move on to the act, one action item for tonight is the purchases and um, contracts greater than 250, Mr. Prentice?
Yes, ma'am. So we have the $250,000 list contracts uh, that we reviewed in the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. And of course, this evening, this is the one item that would advance to the full board for approval, so that we can advance these purchases, uh, which helps us get requisitions and purchase orders and everything issued before um, the summer season, when a lot of these projects need to occur in schools. Um, as we detailed in Audit and Finance, there are a number of these that are subject to either cooperative contracts, board exemptions, sole sources, et cetera. Um, but if you see that there's either a procurement method uh, where a solicitation was issued, or an existing contract that's outstanding, uh, those are the ones that we went through in more explicit detail, uh, particularly this month, uh, due to the fact that we added the three interim columns with the uh, procurement director concurrence, the CFO concurrence, and the legal office concurrence. All of those contracts were sent as a package over to general counsel to review and make sure that they were also uh, concurring with the method of selection and the contract language that was included. There were no issues there. I wanted to also note, as we talked about in Audit and Finance, that the contracts that are the top half of the report, uh, they are ones that were explicitly reviewed. All of our construction contracts follow the standard AIA format, and so we have pre-negotiated terms and conditions that follow that standard industry best practice format. So those contracts are pretty quick and easy to be able to negotiate and execute whenever we move forward with major construction projects and renovations. But happy to answer any questions, and um, then we're meeting in the next couple of weeks to go over a formal adjustment to this report going forward. So I hope to introduce that to the Audit and Finance Committee in May.
Thank you. Ms. McKinnney, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Kelly? Ms. Ms. Watley? Dr. Temple?
No.
Okay, so we will um, table this and vote on it and.
No, we refer to the uh, special meeting for action.
Right. Okay, all right, so the only other thing from Audit and Finance Committee, you may have seen the um, agenda, and we had the um, applications to Audit and Finance for two um, additional members. That was um, delayed in um, committee, because the Audit and Finance Committee members did not receive all of the applications. So that's delayed until next month. The following um, action items will move to the April 29th board meeting, the fixed cost of ownership, FY '20 budget reallocation, head start, early head start FY financial report, and the information items, the 90-day enrollment count, monthly financial report, FY SWAM and utilization plan report, the monthly capital projects report for February 2024, the ESR update, FY '25 budget update, and the constituent pay increase. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mrs. Roberson, did you want to uh, allow Mr. Barrow to go over the 250 list with any detail before we go into special call?
Mr. Prentice, this went over the 250K? You have a, you have a different list? Same list?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm, you know what, I'm confusing fixed cost of ownership. Disregarding you.
He did.
Okay. Ms. Watley, policies?
Policy, you all, I'm sure have received uh, in Board Docs. The staff has brought forward a policy that they are um, asking um, to include uh, it's policy JFAB, they are asking to um, and um, I guess revise the policy to include uh, an exception for our active military. That would allow if, um, I'm going to read it, I'll tell you what, I'll read it, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Barrow. But it would allow uh, our, our active duty military who perhaps live in Berkeley County, but they work at the Joint Base um, off near Lambs. It would allow them to enroll their child perhaps at Lambs, Hunley Park, um, et cetera. This is the, the, if you, you can read the entire JFAB on your own, but this is what they are proposing. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're also striking a couple of lines and revising that. Is that right, Mr. Barrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you can see the red line items where they are striking um, and then adding a student in one county who resides closer to the schools in adjacent county in accordance with South Carolina Code 59-63-480. And then, so the, the portion of that, that's uh, this is uh, more about is the uh, active duty military personnel. It's an opportunity to support our um, military. The district will admit a limited number of out-of-county K through 12 grade students whose parent legal guardian or active duty military personnel assigned to Joint Base Charleston to CCSD neighborhood schools. This provision does not include enrollment at magnet schools, programs, or charter schools. The district must receive written confirmation of the military personnel status, temporary duty, TDY, or permanent duty station, PDS, from an official form, um, from a, official from Joint Base Charleston. The confirmation should include the timeframe in which the military personnel will be stationed at the Joint Base Charleston. Enrollment approv- approval is contingent upon space availability at the neighborhood school. If approved, the student may retain or remain enrolled at the school until the completion of the school's highest grade level. The student must reapply when matriculating to another school level for any other uh, request to change schools. Out-of-county tuition will not be assessed for the student admitted pursuant to this provision. Transportation to and from the school must be provided by the parent. If approved, the parents must submit a release from their home district. It's my understanding that this only affects 14, 14 students?
We don't have an exact count because we haven't implemented it yet, but we do not expect it to be more than a dozen or so uh, individuals.
And, and when, when you brought this forward to me, you um, referenced the monetary impact?
Correct, I mean, we would lose the student funding, we would not receive the student funding for that handful of students. The expectation is um, it would balance out with Berkeley and Dorchester too, because there are uh, individuals that work, that live in our school district, that are interested in going to a school in the other direction as a convenience to the, to the families. Berkeley and Dorchester two have already implemented a plan similar to this. Uh, we prefer to codify it through the, through the board policy that, so that it was official.
Okay, um, when district staff approached me about it, we um, did a Zoom meeting on it and discussed it. I asked numerous questions. I felt that it would be worthy to bring before the board, so that we can um, discuss it and take a vote on it. We either voted up or down to send it to the regular board meeting. And so with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. Um, Ms. Roberson, I'll start with you.
I'm in favor of this, but we don't normally charge military families um, to go to school somewhere, right?
If they're out of district, they would have fallen under a policy that they would pay.
Because they're out of district.
Correct.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Temple?
Um, yeah. The question I had was, um, does this mean that a student who owns real property with assessed property value will not pay tuition? I mean, I, I didn't understand.
We've had, kind of had questions about that in the past.
Vacation for that.
It's kind of an odd thing to be included in the policy.
Right, as we reviewed this policy with uh, with legal, Ms. Payler recognized that the state laws were not, were not um, current. And so she recommended striking those two lines out to comply with state law.
Okay, so that is.
So those changes are separate, distinct from the military clause change.
All right, so it's a new. Many of, our policies per SBA should be reviewed and um, annually. We, we just haven't been doing it. So um, that, that was something that you guys may not remember, but we, that actually has come up before. And, and board discussions, yeah, and so um, yeah, it's a good opportunity to go ahead and revise it. Um, Mr. Grabowski? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, uh, my question's actually around the, the same topic Dr. Temple brought up. Is, is it that the state law has struck those provisions? Or is it that state law has changed to, to say that, that we, that the, the uh, better suiting, or however the phrasing was, doesn't apply anymore? But I, like, the, the better accommodations clause is the, the one I'm talking about.
I'm not sure when the state law changed, but just upon review of this document with Ms. Payler, she said that it's not.
So we're.
We had referenced, so I don't know when it changed, it just was not in there for her, for her comment.
So we're not required, uh, some theorizing here, we're not required anymore to, to accommodate for that, but it doesn't mean that we can't, right?
It means if we leave the policy the way it is, we would be violating state law.
Well, no, that, that's a different, that's a different topic. It's, so the, the policy as it was written says that we don't have to charge non-resident students, or I'm sorry, that we do have to charge non.
That we, that we may charge non-resident students, and according to the, we need to, do we need to revise the policy, yes, sir, to, to comply with state law?
If I may, it looked like those were just examples, and we're just striking the examples.
We, we are.
Mr. Kelly, have you, have you reviewed that, the code that I um, I called out 56-63-40?
Nothing further.
That, that may answer your questions. Um, Ms. Bailey?
Um, I just wanted to ask, the um, the reason why we are adding the active duty military personnel is to accommodate all three districts being on the same page? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
To support the active duty, make it easier for them. Ms. McKinnney? Okay, with that, I will call for the question. The motion is to advance to the April 29th, 2024 agenda for consideration to approve the attached draft of policy JFAB for a first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
You can put Ms. Roberson as the, the one that moved, and Ms. Bailey is the one that seconded. Thank you. Or was it you? And the motion passes. Mr. Kelly?
Okay. Item eight, Ms. Trudy. Seven A? Okay. You know what, we did not, um, okay, we did not, when we adopted the agenda, we did not include uh, consent items. So can we entertain a motion to move item seven A to the consent agenda?
I surrender.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we get a concurrence vote? Any objections? Okay, no objections. Item seven A is on the consent agenda. Upcoming meetings, um, we have a special call board meeting that's on pause at the moment. We're going to revisit that Board of Trustees meeting on the 29th of April, uh, May 7th Audit and Finance. May 13th, the last and final budget workshop and committee of the whole. And then the 20th May for the board. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I see move.
We, any objection? We are adjourned.
But we're not going anywhere. But, I said, but we're not going anywhere.
I would like to call the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Trustees special call meeting back in, from recess, back into public session. Do I have a motion?
So move. Yeah. Yeah. You had the date wrong.
Second. All approve up.
Yep.
Any objection? No objections here. And we are back into session. Uh, the only item that is up for, um, action is, um, a motion to approve the list of purchases and contracts greater than two thousand, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars through March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any debate? Hearing none, we'll bring it on to vote. Fine. We, we will do the vote by manual. Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Ms. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Dr. Temple?
Aye.
Ms. Roberson?
Aye.
I vote aye. Um, is unanimous, it passes. Um, I, with that, uh, I'd like to, uh, ent- entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We're out here.
Thank you.